Welcome to the October 18th, 2021 Select Board Meeting. In accordance with an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency and signed into law by Governor Baker, tonight's Select Board Meeting will be conducted remotely via Zoom and will not be open to the public for physical attendance. The meeting is being recorded, livestreamed, and cable broadcast by the Eastern Community Access Television, which is Comcast 98 and Verizon 23, and on ECAT's website at www.eastoncat.org. This meeting is closed captioned for the hearing impaired. If you're watching on your computer, you'll see a CC button on the toolbar at the bottom of your screen. If you're watching at home and you have a comment or a question, you can email the board or blanchard@easton MA.us, or pose your question in the Q&amp;A feature of the Zoom portal if you are on your computer. Please remember to include your name and address for our minutes. And at this time, I'd like to ask each Select Board member to state their name to ensure we have a quorum.
Craig Barger.
Mark Lamb.
Jamie Stevens.
And the first DC.
And I'm Doty Fulgenetti. So I see that we have some attendees here today and just wanted to let people know that this is a webinar format, so if you can see us but we can't see you, that means you are in the attendees room. And when it's your turn to speak, we will invite you into the main room if you're one of the presenters. So with that, we will start with a public hearing for National Grid and Verizon New England Poll Petition Hearing. Craig, if you'd like to read the public hearing notice.
The Select Board of Easton, as licensing authorities pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 166, Section 22, will hold a public hearing via remote participation using the Zoom platform on Monday, October 18th, 2021, at 6:00 PM to consider an act on a petition of National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated to install one JO poll on Lothrup Street and to relocate one JO poll on Lothrup Street, beginning at a point approximately 900 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Sheridan Street and Lothrup Street, and continuing approximately 130 feet in a west direction. In accordance with the petition for Plan Number 30087320 dated June 3rd, 2021, as shown on file with the Select Board's Office.
Okay, great. And we have Tim from National Grid, I believe, is in the attendees and can be moved over. And just a reminder, if you are an attendee and you have a question, please put your question into the Q&amp;A and we'll read your question and answer it. Hi, Tim.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you.
So we have the poll petition to move the poll on Lothrup Street at the intersection of Sheridan Street and Lothrup Street?
That's correct. Yes. So National Grid is petitioning to relocate, looks like Poll 11 and Poll 12 on Lothrup Street. The proposed polls are going to be approximately 130 feet apart from each other at that location.
Okay. Are there any questions from anyone on the board? Connor, did you have any comments or questions on this?
No, just for the benefit of if there are folks who are here in the attendees as part of our administrative process, they get a copy of the hearing notice. Just to reiterate what you've said, Doty, if they have particular questions about the polls, please put them into the Q&amp;A so we can direct them to Tim. But also just for folks' knowledge, when we receive these in our office, we send them to Public Works to effectively sign off or provide any comments or concerns that they have any. And on this and the Sheridan and Spooner, there is no concerns. So.
Okay. And will these wires be undergrounded?
No, this, I think the Spooner portion, that is polls that are related to underground service on the town's property. But, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong on this one. This is the other side of the campus. This is just new polls. I don't know if it's just routine replacement.
I believe it's routine replacement. I was trying to get in touch with the engineer on this project earlier today to get clarification on that. I'm pretty sure it's just routine replacement, and it is overhead wires in that area.
Okay. All right. If there's no other questions, then I would take a motion to approve the poll petition for Hearing Plan Number 30087320, which is 900 feet west of the intersection of Sheridan and Lothrup Street for the poll hearing.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
It's Barger and Lamb. Back to you, Craig.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
AC, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. And then the second item is also a poll hearing, if you want to read that one, Craig.
Sure. The Select Board of Easton, as licensing authorities pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 166, Section 22, will hold a public hearing via remote participation using the Zoom platform on Monday, October 18th, 2021, at 6:01 PM to consider an act on a petition of National Grid and Verizon New England Incorporated to remove one JO poll on Spooner Street and to relocate two JO polls on Spooner Street, beginning at a point approximately 290 feet west of the center line of the intersection of Sheridan Street and Spooner Street, and continuing approximately 45 feet in a west direction. In accordance with the petition for Plan Number 30087320 dated June 3rd, 2021, as shown on file with the Select Board's Office.
So this is the same type of thing. Our DPW, the Director David Field, had noted that there were no concerns about this one either. Any questions from the board? No, Connor, anything?
So this is, I believe, related to the request from Grid for an easement from the town associated with the abutting property for underground conduit for utilities to get to the new elementary school. And this, you could see on page 22 of the package, shows eliminating one of the polls and moving the other two. I don't know, Tim, if there's anything more to it than that.
Oh, I believe you covered everything there, but I can just do a quick little description myself. So as previously stated, that is correct. National Grid is petitioning to relocate two polls on Spooner Street, that's polls 11 and 12, the proposed polls, to be approximately 45 feet apart from each other. And I believe we will be also removing existing Poll 13 on Spooner Street as well.
Okay. If there's no other, oh, there's something in the Q&amp;A. Hold on one second. Florence Sullivan is asking, will sidewalks be repaired to the original condition?
That's correct. Whenever we install poles or ducts in the public way, we restore to the same or better condition than what it was.
Okay, terrific. Any other comments or questions from anyone on the board? All right. With that, I will take a motion to approve the poll petition for Plan Number 30087320 at the intersection of Sheridan and Spooner Street.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. Great. Thank you for being here tonight, Tim. We appreciate you taking the time to come to our Zoom meeting.
Thank you, Tim. Have a good night.
You as well. Thank you.
Okay. Next, of our licenses and permits, we have some one-day liquor licenses. The first one is the Cambridge Chamber Ensemble. I believe the applicant is also in the attendees, so I'm just going to give a brief description of that while we wait. The Cambridge Chamber Ensemble will be presenting the opera Savitri, I hope I pronounced that right, at Oakseam's Memorial Hall, 3 Barrows Street, Easton. There are three dates here, November 19th, 20th, and 21st. The 19th and 20th are 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM, and the 21st is an afternoon at 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Chief Sullivan has confirmed that an Easton Police Detail will not be required for this event. So, Mrs. Bernbaum, thank you for being here tonight.
Happy to be here.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about the event? This is exciting that the opera is coming to Easton.
Yes, it is. We're called the Cambridge Chamber Ensemble. We're a small opera group based in Cambridge, and we're thrilled to be performing at Oakseam's Hall. We have decided to serve food and wine, and that's what the three licenses have to do with. It's Saturday and Sunday evenings, November 19th and 20th, and then a matinee on Sunday, Friday and Saturday, and then a matinee on Sunday, starting at 3:00, and the evenings will be 7:30. We don't expect it to be late. We probably will be out of there by 10 o'clock on both nights. And that's basically it. And since it's an opera, it's not a rock concert, so we don't expect rowdiness. And we hope you'll all come.
Well, that leads me to my next question. If it's open to the public, and where can people get tickets and find out more information about it?
Fred Ames, who's the manager at Oakseam's Hall, has told me that he's going to publicize it heavily in the area, in local online events. I can, we're publicizing it on Facebook and through email, but I would be delighted if there was some way I could get it, get the advertisements to you people. Is there a place I can email them to? You could distribute them? Because it will be, I will say, ECAT will be will be videotaping it and making it available to anybody on their cable channels, so you will get to see it for free. But I would rather you show up and buy a ticket, frankly.
Sure. If you can email that to selectboard@easton MA.us.
All right. Selectboard@easton.
Eastern MA.us.
Okay.
We will have a weekly email distribution called the Town Crier that lists events like this. We will get it in that. And for those of us that have social media, we will do our best to share that and tell our friends. And if people are not connected with those of us that are on social media, you can look at the Oakseam's Memorial Hall's Facebook page, and I'm sure they'll have the information there.
Yes. Fred said that he would publicize it as widely as he could, but tomorrow morning I'll send out some material to you, and I would appreciate it if you would post it. It'll be very exciting.
Terrific. And you know, if it's a nice weekend and the weather's beautiful, let your people know they can come down in the afternoon and walk around the historic area and the Governor Ames Park, and there's restaurants in our downtown, so you can make a day of it.
I will definitely add that to the advertising.
All right. Well, thank you so much. And with that, any comments or questions from the board?
Good luck. This sounds super exciting. I don't remember the last time the opera was in Easton, so that's pretty amazing. And I'm not too concerned about the rowdiness either.
I don't think, no. People over 50 who drink wine will not be rowdy.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right. Well, with that, would you like to make a motion, Craig, to to approve the one-day liquor licenses for Cambridge Chamber Ensemble, November 19th and 20th from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM, and November 21st from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM?
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
So that's Barger and Lamb. Back to you, Craig.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. And good luck to you, and thank you for choosing Easton to bring your opera, and we're excited to have you in our town.
We're excited to come down here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martha.
Okay, next, we have Shovel Town Brewery and Night with Jake and Jenny and Liam Coleman, also at Oakseam's Hall. So we'll get to that one. Jim McSherry, is he here? There he is. So Jim McSherry, on behalf of Shovel Town Brewery and Jake and Jenny Music, have applied for a one-day beer and wine license for a night with Jake and Jenny and Liam Coleman. This event will be held at Oakseam's Memorial Hall on October 29th, 2021, from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM. A Detail Officer will not be required for this event. So, hi, Jim. How are you tonight?
Good, Doty. How are you?
Good. Welcome.
Good, Connor. Well, thank you for having me. Probably won't be too rowdy either. That was good entertainment, but. Yeah, Jake and Jenny and Liam, they're from Nashville, and they've sold their tickets out at 8:00, and we're going to provide the cash beer and wine. So it says to 11:00, but I don't think I'll be pouring to 11:00. It's probably clearing out at pretty much 10:30, so.
So they've played at events recently in town, and I've heard great things about them. So this is really also a great opportunity for the community to get out and see some live entertainment and enjoy some Shovel Town Brewery beverages, right?
I would agree. Yeah, Jake and Jenny's come a long way. They started with us in open mic about three years ago, and now they've played on the radio in Boston, The Bull in 92, if you get the other country station. They've come out with some live music, and they also do a live songwriter's night every fourth Thursday at the brewery, bringing some good talent in with their own live music, so their own original songs, excuse me. So it's become a good event for us and for local people.
That's great. And how do people get tickets?
They're already sold out, Jake and Jenny, on that night, they're actually sold out.
All right. Terrific.
Yeah, they kept it. It was 80. They have pretty social media presence, and they kept it at 80.
Oh, great. All right. Terrific. Well, with that, Craig, do you want to make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for a night with Jake and Jenny and Liam Coleman at Oakseam's Memorial Hall, 3 Barrows Street, Easton, from 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM?
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb. Back to you, Craig.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. And also for the next one, Shovel Town Brewery for Immaculate Conception Church Parish fundraiser, 193 Main Street, Easton's. Jim is here to apply for a one-day beer and wine license for the Immaculate Conception Church Parish fundraiser. This event will be held at Immaculate Conception Church on November 13th, 2021, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM. A Detail Officer will also not be required for this event. So what's about that one?
This is just a fundraiser for the church. They approached us, and we told them we definitely do a fundraiser. It's in their gymnasium. They expect, I don't really know the amount, but they say 80 to 100 people at certain times. But so we'll give them part of the proceeds or whatever we normally do, but it's definitely working with the Catholic Church. We haven't done it before, but they asked, so it should be a good afternoon in the church gymnasium.
Well, I think it's great when organizations are having events like this, that they use local resources in the community. And you know, Shovel Town is everywhere I look. It seems that, I don't know how you can be in so many places at once, but you're definitely such a great contributor to the community for organizations, nonprofits, and really just always there, not only for that, but also to really support your fellow entrepreneurs in the brewery business. So I want to just call out and make a special thank you to you for doing that. Huge, huge help with economic development in Easton, and Mark, I'm sure will want to say more to that. So any comments or questions from anyone on the board?
Jim, you know, I don't know how many years you guys have been around, but it feels like you've been around for like 30 years because you have managed your way into the fabric of Easton and supported so many businesses, so many individuals. And I know you hear this all the time, but it's true. And I can't thank you enough. You know, when I tell people I'm from Easton, I usually bring up your business. And you know, you've really, I know a lot of people who strive to be just like you, and I mean that. So you know, thank you for all that you do.
Thank you. I didn't expect it to be full of acolytes in the meeting here, but it'll be five years, February 2nd, Mark.
That's amazing. Five years you've.
Five years.
That's incredible.
Years ago, working with Connor and, you know, economic development, the people. I mean, the town of Easton is great, great support for us, and you know, we help out where we can, so we appreciate all the kind words.
Great. Thank you. So Craig, with that, if you'd like to make a motion to award the one-day liquor license to Shovel Town Brewery for the Immaculate Conception Church Parish fundraiser on November 13th, from 4:00 PM to 8:00 PM?
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger, Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Stevens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And Fulgenetti, yes. Good to see you again, Jim. Thanks.
Okay, guys. Take care.
Good night, Jim. Take care.
Thank you. Bye.
So next up for our action and discussion is discussion and vote for the Town of Easton Municipal 2020 Reprecincting Map. And I think we have Danielle and Leon.
We do. So just for the board's brief update, while Danielle and Leon are joining, since Danielle and Leon were here a couple of months ago, letting you know that this will be coming in on two wheels due to the state's calendar. That has certainly been the case. They have proposed districts and closed a comment period today at 5:00. So I copied the letter Doty and I submitted that Danielle was coming up to prepare relevant facts for us. So tonight, you have a map that Danielle and Leon worked very hard on and are here to give you an update on.
Thank you.
I guess I will start. Hi, everybody. Nice to see you again. As Connor mentioned, we did come, Leon and I came to your board meeting, I believe it was August 23rd, and gave you kind of an update of what was happening in regards to the 2020 federal census and the represincting process. So on September 29th, we did receive the data release packet from the state with some preliminary maps of suggestions of what our represincting should be. And as we suspected and spoke to you about back in August, we are looking at a seventh precinct for Easton. Leon, at that point, as far as I'm concerned, is a hero here, has spent so much time redoing these maps. He really looked at that original map, and I want to say they probably went back and forth with three different maps before presenting the map that we have in front of you today. Leon, did you want to speak at all about, you know, what those reiterations look like and why you were?
Sure. So we put a few different scenarios together, and the state provided their map. And basically, I just took the two, and we both kind of made a couple tweaks here and there. Also, the state was very responsive about getting that turned around very quickly. So we probably had it in our hands less than three days and went through iterations and had a final copy done, so.
And what Leon really, I think, brought to the table was looking at development and potential development in the town and making sure that we left Rome in the right precincts in order to grow in the next 10 years. So as Leon mentioned, on October 8th, those revised maps were finalized through the state in that process. And the final part of that would be to have a vote of the Select Board of the map that we put in front of you now. Upon a vote, it then gets submitted to the LEDRC, I always say that wrong, I want to make sure I say it right, for their final approval. It's very, very rare that they don't approve it because the Secretary's Census Division has been an integral part in the development and the preapproval. So the map that we do send to you does take into consideration Mass General Law 54, Section 6, with the stipulations of no more than 4,000 residents per precinct and plus or minus 5% variance per precinct, which is not as easy as it sounds to be. It's definitely a math problem to figure out. So again, I give kudos to Leon for the work that he does and the magic that he does with the maps to make all of that work out. As Connor had mentioned, there has been some changes in regards to redistricting and some potential concerns that we have for that. But I do believe that at this stage of the game, what we need to do is approve the map that we have before you now. And the Acts of, Chapter 56, excuse me, of the Acts of 2021, which is allowing the legislation to do their redistricting prior to represincting, does also stipulate that we can come back to the drawing board after they've drawn and approved their districts and revote, essentially so that we can eliminate or reduce the number of split precincts. I'm certainly happy to talk a little bit more about that if you have any questions.
Well, I think just to be clear for the people at home, there's two things going on. These are the changes to our local precincts, the way we vote. And then the state redistricting for our state legislators is a different layer on that. So we're not voting on that. We're just voting on the precincts in our town. And the state isn't going to be resolving the issues with how they're redistricting until after we vote this map. So Craig, go ahead. You got a question?
Just a question. When you say split districts, precincts, I'm sorry, can you explain a little bit of that, Danielle, for the people at home?
Sure. Absolutely. Last Tuesday, on the 12th, the legislation did release their redistricting maps. And prior to 2020, with the issues with COVID and receiving census information in a timely fashion, those districts were always built upon the precincts that were done locally first. This legislation allows for them to do it concurrently or prior to the precincts. And so for many communities, that's really not a big issue, that they have very minor changes within their community. But for any communities like Easton that has an additional precinct or a reduction in a precinct, moving those lines is dramatic. And that, of course, puts us into a real problem. If we look at the map that we're proposing to you today, and we compare that to the districts that are currently being discussed by the legislature, we would have seven precincts. Four of them would be split precincts, and three of them would not. So I'm not saying that that's where we would end, because I can tell you Leon has done, and again, an incredible amount of work today, trying to come up with ways that we can redo it if we have to use these lines. And I do believe that we have two potentials, well, maybe three, but one potential would be to go to nine precincts. Not sure that's something that we want to do, but that's the only way math will work to allow the plus or minus 5%. Or we're looking at having a minimum of one split precinct. So to answer your question, Craig, what is a split precinct? Essentially, within one precinct, local district, there will be multiple representatives. So in the scenario that Leon and I were talking about today, we take Precinct 4 as an example. Half of Precinct 4 would be in the 9th Plymouth District, and half of Precinct 4 would be in the 3rd District for Representatives. So what does that look like from my seat and my perspective? A nightmare, a logistical nightmare. It's not only, and the primary concern we have would be voter confusion. When people come to the correct precinct, at that stage, they need to get the correct ballot. And I can tell you, I've been a clerk for over 11 years. Whenever we have multiple ballots in a primary, as an example, in my 11 years, we have not had there not be an issue with somebody getting the wrong ballot. It just happens. There's human error along the way, even with all the checks and balances that we have. So voter confusion is a real concern. I do believe that we'll be able to program our poll pads and our tabulators to accommodate the two different ballots and to AB precincts, let's say, within that precinct number. That will be costly to do that, and will require additional election workers, without a doubt. I can't speak what my plan would be right now, but I would tell you right now, I would rather actually have two check-ins, one for 4A and one for 4B, and two checkouts, one for 4A and one for 4B, with two different tabulators. Because at the end of the night, you also do have to do all your tally, and I would need two tally teams to separate all those ballots and then begin their work associated with the two different districts.
So is it fair to say, Danielle, so right now, so we have one polling place in Easton, and really, people, when they show up to vote, under the current way it works, we have six precincts. We need to go to seven because of population growth, which we anticipated. Under normal pre-COVID times, we in the state would get federal census data and say, okay, this is the amount of people. We're going to have our new precincts, which for our purposes is an administrative process, not a political one, right? This is just kind of grouping roughly equal population size clusters of residents in the town. And typically, that would happen first, and then the state of Massachusetts drawing, their maps would use that as a basis and say, okay, they already have all these neat lines. Let's just follow them, right? And so now the issue is, we're both doing it at the same time, and they're not going to, they potentially won't match. And so if you have a split precinct, right now, when folks come in to vote, you have maps and things like that. And with six or seven precincts, it's pretty easy, even from 10 or 15 feet away, say like, okay, that's where I live. I know I'm precinct 6. You give the right ballot, you're good. With a split precinct, it's possible that somebody could come and say, oh, I'm in precinct six. And then it's not, here's your ballot. It's okay. What street are you in precinct six? And then potentially what, what house number or what side of a road, right? Or, or is it the split precinct, you would be broken to four, like you'd have these sub precincts. A and B and it would be on the voters to know that, or else it would just be potential confusion at check-ins.
Yeah, I mean, it would, our poll pad and voter list system really does. Make it very difficult for there to be a mistake of somebody voting in the wrong precinct.
Right.
Because oftentimes they do not know which precinct, oftentimes they do see on the board in the map what precinct they are, but still make their way to the wrong precinct. But the poll pads and the voting list that we have at that time really, really do eliminate. They won't even be able to on a poll pad check in and receive a ballot from a precinct that that happens. It really is just the human part of handing out another ballot at that point. And then having to do the tallies at the end of the night with separating those ballots. Now remember, this is. Let's talk about, you know, a presidential election and the number of ballots that you have. At the end of the night, having to take all of those ballots and separate them, we're talking thousands. Before you can even start your end of night tally work definitely is encumbersome. And will, will increase our costs for sure. So that's where I say, if I were to make a decision right now with, and we only had one split precinct. I would recommend that we would go with a split precinct, but from a logistical standpoint. Move towards there being two distinct lines so that they can only get the correct ballot. And only put it into the, the correct machine.
So we'll have, we have on the table for us tonight is to vote yes or no to this. And really there's no alternative at this point. You've put in a ton of work on this. If we vote for this tonight and the state does not line up with, with the precincts. Then we could always modify this after the fact. So it's not like we're locked in forever. If we, we do have to vote for it tonight. And we also, like Connor said, we, we sent a letter to our legislators and to. The legislators that are chairing the redistricting commission. Explaining our concerns and we had some of our legislators also send letters on our behalf. So we can't be the only community that has experienced growth that's going to impact the addition of another precinct. And so when they see this, hopefully they'll take that into consideration. And if not, we'll figure it out at that point. Right?
That's absolutely correct. And from my perspective, I, I think it's also really important to note that the sooner, you know, that we submit this and we keep going with our process. And the more communities that do, hopefully, as you said, the legislation will look at that and, and use the 2020 lines rather than the 2010 lines.
Okay. Mark, did you have a comment?
Everything you said, Dottie, was everything I was thinking. So I mean, this isn't an ideal situation, but you have built fail safes into this to unwind this. Potential conundrum down the line to fix it. Because everything you outlined, Danielle, all your concerns, that sounds like a disaster waiting to happen. It's a very serious disaster. And we want to avoid that. And like I said, you've done your work so that we can unravel it if we get to that point. And I just wanted to also. Point out, and I know it's been said a number of times because I have a feeling people might be watching at home or listening to this thing. Why are we doing this anyway? Connor said it, Danielle, you said it, Dottie, I think you said it, the whole population increased. So therefore we needed to add a district. Pretty simple, straightforward. This isn't a choice. It's you're forced. And then my other question is, how will people be notified if their district is changed? Or will everybody get a notification just confirming their district? How will that go?
Yeah. So just to, to make sure the, the words that you were saying, you use the word districts both and both. Which is different than what the legislation does. But as soon as we do have a final map and we have the data and we know. With each address and what their new precinct will be, that's when we'll go ahead with. Allowing our vendor to send out our annual street listing census forms that are done locally. So that does take a three to four weeks. So I usually send that out the second week of, of January. It might be a little later in 2022. But on there, there will be an insert. And in on the insert, it will explain that in accordance with Mass General Law 54, section five. You are hereby notified that your precinct may have changed. And to, and that is listed on the census form and to take note of such. Change. And then of course, all of our signage at the polling locations, all of the stuff that we have for maps online. Will all be changed so that people could look up their precinct as they do now when they enter the polling location.
Great. Thank you.
Jamie or Jen? Any questions? We probably hit them all by now.
Thank you very thorough. Thank you.
All right. Well, with that, if there's no other comments or questions, I don't see anything on the Q and A. I would take a motion to vote to accept the Town of Easton municipal 2020 re precincting map as shown in the packet.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Devens, yes.
Stacy, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. And thank you Danielle and Leon for the amazing amount of work that you've done on this and. Really appreciate all the, the attention to detail.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Okay, next we have an appointment to the Agricultural Commission. Matt Soldner, we just appointed him to the Council on Agent. He has applied to be on the Agricultural Commission and noted that he does. Have a, what is, how did he put it? He has applauded the community garden in Wheaton for the past five years. Matthew is a volunteer that I know pretty well. He's volunteered for the Lions Club for many years and is always. The guy that raises his hand first and says that he's in, in it to roll up his sleeves and help. So. We told him that he didn't have to be here tonight because it's uncontested and he are, we'd like to have people, if they're new, at least come to. An interview so that the public can see them. But where he was just here a couple of weeks ago, we told him that he didn't have to attend. So if anybody would like to make a motion to appoint Matt Soldner to the Agricultural Commission with a term expiration of June 30th, 2024.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb, this is a roll call vote.
Right, Barger Soldner.
Lamb Soldner.
Devon Soldner.
AC Soldner.
And full Janetti Soldner. The next is the way find, wayfinding working group appointment. The nomination is Michaela Wolf and she's being nominated by the Historical Commission. So if anybody has any. Comments or questions on that, I would take a, a motion to accept the nomination of Michaela Wolf on the wayfinding working group.
So moved, so moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb, roll call vote.
Barger Wolf.
Lamb Wolf.
Devens Wolf.
AC Wolf.
And full Janetti Wolf. I would just throw in a comment that the Economic Development Council was not able to meet quorum last week. So they have not been able to appoint somebody to that commission. So hopefully we will do that. Anybody who's on the Economic Development Council that is interested in the wayfinding as well as anybody else in the public here, welcome to say that you, you want to. Go to those meetings. You just wouldn't be able to vote on anything. So next is the discussion and vote for an amendment to the Economic Development Council charge. So hold on one second. So. So the Town of Easton Economic Development Council charged, "The mission is to promote the sustainable economic development of the Town of Easton. To collaboratively seek local and regional opportunities for economic growth in order to generate. Employment opportunities and tax revenue to recognize neighborhood and community concerns during the development of economic policy. To leverage existing infrastructure and facilities to the fullest extent possible while addressing weaknesses. Through collaboration with the public, businesses and other governments." So there's, so Mark can talk a little bit more about it, but we, the Economic Development Council is proposing to change the membership from seven. To eight people to be appointed by the select board. And it would be two select board members, the Director of Planning and Economic Development. Four private sector appointees preferably, but not necessarily from financial, retail, manufacturing, commercial and/or industrial sectors. And the select board may seek nominations for membership from an organization included but not limited to the Chamber of Commerce. Other organizations, the select would seize fit. And the Director of Planning and Economic Development shall serve as the clerk of the council and be responsible for maintaining the minutes, agendas and documents pertaining to the council. The change to this is to add one member and it would be a member of the planning and zoning board. So Mark, do you want to talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, I definitely do. Thank you, Dottie. So. You know, I've been on economic development for the past couple of years and you know, during those years, our, one of our sole focuses has really been to help small business in town or any business in town through COVID. And we've been very successful and we're kind of coming out of that. And then, you know, in addition to that, we also, we look at the areas in town, whether it's, you know, five corners. Queesit or downtown, as we have identified these as three major economic zones. And there's, you know, we, we talk about ways where we can improve these areas. We talk about studies that are being conducted. And you know, those areas are so imperative to the future of Easton. They genuinely are. We're going to be, we've spent millions of dollars investing in them. So we're going to be relying so heavily on those areas to, you know, better Easton in years to come, decades to come. So on this, on the Economic Development Council, it would, I, I would like to have the Chair of Planning and Zoning. As part of this council because by virtue of that position, regardless of who holds that position, whether it's today, tomorrow, or 10, 20 years. Regardless of who holds that position, they have knowledge, a body of knowledge about. What's going on in those districts that we might not otherwise have. So in conversation, they can introduce something that we don't know. They can help redirect us with thought. If something isn't working out. They could tell us why. We could, you know, offer our input on, you know, ways to make things work. It would just, it would put economic development on the continued trajectory of being more involved in what's going on in economic development in Easton. And in these economic zones in Easton in more of a real time way. I don't know how else to say that. But I do believe it will benefit Easton, it will benefit economic development. It'll benefit those areas. And I don't, I honestly don't see any downside to it. So you know, if anybody has any questions, you know. The impetus of it or why I think this is a good idea, please let me know.
That one of, one of the things is that when we have a charge or a charter, we try not to change it and tweak it too much because we've gotten. We, you know, in my experience on the board being on here for a long time, you see what happens. Sometimes a new commission, for instance, the cultural, the cultural districts committee, they, we. There were so many people eager to be on that. We said, oh, sure, we'll expand it to 11 and then you can't get a quorum. And then the next thing you know, the committee can't meet. And they're coming back saying, we need to reduce the quorum. We try to anticipate what these changes might have. And I noticed that the wording in here, it doesn't say the Chair of the Planning and Zoning. It says a member because you know. This, no, this chair may, you know, certainly want to be on, on, on this. But maybe 10 years down the road, the chair can't do it and wants to appoint somebody.
Very good point, Dottie. Yeah, that's, that's a really good.
We're trying to keep it as.
Yeah. So it doesn't lock one person into the position, but it'll at least have a representative and, and they. I would hope that they would come to those economic development meetings, regardless of who they are with, with knowledge that we can benefit from.
Exactly.
Yeah, no, that's a good point. So yeah, it wouldn't be the chair to Dottie's point, but a member of maybe in this case, the chair would be interested, but down the line. It would be a member.
Right. And they, everything else is, is the same remains unchanged, unchanged except for that and taking the opportunity to change board, a selectman to select board, just to. Make it consistent with all the other language. Any comments or questions from the board?
I think it's good, a good proposal, Dottie, Mark.
Thank you.
Jamie?
Yeah, I just want to say thanks for all the thought that's gone into just kind of further developing that, that team. That's fantastic. So thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you.
Ken, any comment?
No, I agree that just it's, it's a value add. So it makes a lot of sense.
All right, terrific. So with that, I would take a motion to vote to. Accept the amendment to the Economic Development Council charge as noted in the packet.
Go ahead, Mark.
So moved, Lamb.
Barger, yes, second.
So that's Lamb and Barger. Now we're going to, poor Elizabeth will be trying to catch up with the inconsistent pattern here. Lamb and Barger and back to you Craig to start the vote.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Devens, yes.
AC, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. Thank you. And thank, thank you for bringing that forward, Mark, and putting so much thought into that, like Jamie said. Okay, next is a discussion and vote on a contract amendment for the owner's project manager services by tie and bond for the Red Mill Road Water Treatment Plant. DPW 2021 dash zero five amendment number one.
Dave Field is here to join us.
Good evening. Mark, memo on the vest, so.
Thank you, Dave.
I didn't catch if Connor introduced, I was in the transition, but this is a contract for OPM Services. An amendment for tie and bond. This is part of the Red Mill Road Water Treatment Plant. Environmental Partners is our designer and tie and bond is our owner's project manager. We are amending the contract to include bidding assistance in construction phase engineering services. So we're amending the contract by $155,000 to bring into a total $210,000. In extending the completion date to 12/31/2023. To incorporate the full construction of the project. And this is all included in the original appropriation for the treatment plant, which is estimated to cost of $15.6 million. Are there any questions or concerns?
I did take a look at it, Dave. I looked at the scope of it all. It seems like you have covered absolutely everything. You know me, I was trying to figure out things that you couldn't have covered. And you, you did, even you know, there's 500 hours of work in there. It goes all the way to the closeout documents to the submission. I couldn't find anything that you haven't covered for that. So I have no questions and I support this.
Anyone else on the board? Comments or questions?
No questions.
Just reiterate Mark's points and that, thank you for the time and effort put into such an important, you know, project.
Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you. It's always so thorough. Thank you.
All right. With that, I will take a motion to award, to award the contract amendment for the owner's project manager services by tie and bond for the Red Mill. Road Water Treatment Plant, DPW 2021 dash oh five amendment one.
So moved, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Devens, yes.
AC, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. Thanks for being here tonight, Dave.
Thanks. Dave, downtown looks great, by the way. It does. It's coming along. It looks awesome.
And just to update you on this project, we are out to bid right now. So we'll probably be back before you. In early January with recommendation for award for the construction of the project.
Terrific. Also, Dave's team and Mike are going to launch a website for the PFAS plants as well this week. So that's. Another separate construction project that will be going on at the same time. So, and I made the crosswalks. They're really great. Thank you, Dave.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along. The next item is a discussion and vote to approve the issuance and other details of the general obligation bond from the October 28th, 2021. And to sign the related closing documents.
Sure. So Treasurer Collector Linda Hawks is here and I believe she's going to get moved into the panel. Wendy Nightingale is as well, Finance Director, starting one of our annual bond sales. And our ratings report from Moody's. So while they're loading in, I'll just touch on the ratings report and then Linda can dive into the details of the particulars of this bond issuance. So every year, Easton has its credit worthiness analyzed by Moody's Investor Services, who assigns a rating to our long and short term debt. So that investors buying these bonds can price it appropriately. We had our AA3 rating reaffirmed, which is great. But this year, we actually asked them to provide us a little bit of a more in-depth analysis because we have been. Building our reserves quite significantly over recent years as part of a town's financial management policies and Moody's has kind of repeatedly. Identified that in their ratings issuance. And Moody's has kind of repeatedly identified that in their ratings issuance every year, saying, oh, this is a really good thing you're doing. You should keep doing that good thing. And it shows up in one of the key factors that could lead to a bond rating upgrade, which would be really desirable for interest costs and things of that nature. So we actually asked them to give us kind of a rating sheet showing where Easton falls compared to median AA1, 2, and 3s around the United States and particularly in Massachusetts. And in, I think 12 out of 18 of those categories were actually above or significantly above the median AA3 community. And really the only, the only area, significant area where we're not is reserves. And so we've made a lot of progress there. And this will tie into discussions about the capital budget later on the warrant, but we still need to keep doing the work we're doing. But we're, we're moving in the right direction and for now, we're getting the AA3 reaffirmed. That rating is in the packet. We always put it online. I know that's not necessarily something that's super interesting to the public, but it's very, very, very important because it, you know, connotes how much we're going to pay on tens of millions of dollars in bonds to do things like build schools. So they repeatedly over the years, and I think again this year, identified the town as having strong financial management and improving reserve position. And so that's something that the board should take some pride in, and the community should too. So. Linda, you want to get into the details of the particulars of this bond?
Yep, sure. Good evening, everybody. I think there's a memo in your packet that sort of summarizes what this borrowing is for. This is a larger borrowing than normal. $36 million largely attributable to the early elementary school project. When we last met in August, I came before you to have a bond anticipation note authorized. And that is that, that was the temporary financing. This is the permanent financing. As that, as that project is moving along, we're allowed to permanently finance a portion, an appropriate portion of the total that we know has been done or will be done within a defined period of time. So this bond, 35 million of the 36 million is for the school project, which is progressing nicely. The rest is for other items, the first $500,000 of the water treatment plant and the PFAS treatment facilities, $100,000 for facilities, parking lot, resurfacing, and then $185,000, which is the full cost of a sidewalk tractor. The interest rate that we got was, the net interest rate is 2.33%. That is a very good rate, according to our finance advisors. There were nine bidders on the, for the bonds. And that is a testament to the attractiveness of this town. From a, from a bidding perspective, there was a lot of competition and that helped to keep the, the rates low. The 2.33% does include a premium of $1.8 million, which will be allocated to different projects after we pay the closing costs for the bond. That's about it.
Terrific. Any comments or questions from anyone on the board? Mark, you look like you're ready to gear up for a question.
It's just, great work, outstanding. You know, this is pretty straightforward. This is necessary. There's no way around it. The hope is that, you know, we get the lowest rate and it doesn't affect our credit rating and all of that and check off all those boxes. So it looks great. Thank you.
Jamie?
I was just going to say, I think it, again, as Connor mentioned, it speaks to the hard work that the town continues to do to maintain, you know, high credit rating. And, and now we're reaping some of the benefits of that and hopefully we continue to in the future. So that's a collective, that's a lot of work for, you know, the last however many years it's been, you know, to get to where we're at. So thank you.
Jen?
No, agree. Jamie took the words out of my mouth. This has been, you know, a lot of, a lot of commitment and diligence that has gotten us to this point. And thank you to everyone who really drives this process and keeps us on track as a community.
Craig?
Yeah, I would, I would encourage people that they can, since it's going to be online, to look at the, the, the bond rating process and, and what they say about the town. Because I think it speaks volumes about the work that Connor and Wendy and Linda do on behalf of the community. And I think it's important for people to know that, that it, it may be a little complicated when you try to read it, but if, understanding that it is, it benefits the town to have that kind of leadership that gives us those kind of bond ratings.
Yeah. And to add to that, you know, when we put in financial principles and practices over the past several years and, you know, in tough budget years, we've, we and the school committee and the voters in this town have had to make really tough decisions, but we've really tried to keep our eye on the prize of building that stabilization and we've done a good job. I think we'll be able to do, you know, Connor will talk about it a little bit more, about trying to rebuild that even more this year. And if that's really the only thing that's keeping us from that next level, we're, we're going to get there. But it's really, it's so easy in a tough year, just like with a home budget, to say, you know, if we get this, we, we could spend this one-time money for this one thing. Or, you know, I think that when we have, when we are faced with those challenges, we, we really know that this is going to be the ultimate result of that, that good credit rating. And like Linda said, you know, that, that could be the difference of millions of dollars on, on a big multimillion dollar project in interest costs. So every, every dollar of that makes a big difference. So really, thank you so much, Linda and Wendy and Connor. Like everyone said, your leadership is really important in these areas. So with that, there is, Craig, do you have the recommended language for the, for the motion?
Yeah. I move to adopt the votes prepared by Bond Council in connection with the town's $36,285,000 general obligation bond dated October 28th, 2021, and incorporate the text of the vote of the Select Board into the minutes of this meeting.
Second Lamb.
So that's Barger and Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Devens, yes.
AC, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. Thanks so much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you, Wendy.
Okay. And next is the review and signing of the November 8th, 2021 special town meeting warrant.
Thank you, Dottie. So this is your last night of article review. At the end of this, please make sure I, I ask you to vote to sign the warrant as well, because we'll need to post it and town meeting will be in a couple of weeks. So tonight, in the packet, it's flagged on the agenda and in your bookmarks, the articles we're going to talk about, we're going to start with one, which is a transfer to stabilization fund. So Article One is standard every fall. The town's financial management principles that we were just talking about in the context of a bond rating stipulate that a quarter of available free cash will be transferred into the stabilization fund in a given year. And so that's what this proposes to do. Free cash for fiscal '21, which is a fiscal year that just closed on June 30th, is, is sizable. It's quite robust for a few reasons and better than we would have anticipated when setting budgets during COVID, including the availability of FEMA, public assistance, cares, and really shrewd kind of management of those federal disaster dollars by town and school department heads, resulting in us not leaning on our actual appropriated budgets as heavily, thereby increasing departmental turnbacks. So for one example, the, the school department turned back over one and a half million, which is excellent. And a credit to them. On the revenue side, some of our revenues dramatically overperformed expectations, most notably building permits. When we were working on budgets in spring of 2020 and things were shutting down, the kind of conventional wisdom was that economic activity would grind to a halt. And in certain areas, it did. And in certain areas, there's still pretty severe lingering effects that, you know, you read about with supply chain disruption and things like that. But one area that's done very well is obviously real estate values and home improvement and, and other building projects. And so permit, license and permits actually came in 50% above budget. Really dramatically over what our expectations were and actually came in above pre-COVID numbers. So a variety of factors like that, coupled with ARPA funds that we received the first tranche of from the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, a portion of that was eligible based on calendar year calculations for fiscal '21 revenue, offsetting our reliance on local revenue even further. So the, the net result is that free cash is in the area of 4.7 million, which is significant. Norm, the, the highest we did recently was about 2.6 in 2016 and then it had been dwindling each year. We don't expect this size next year. And it's important to kind of, it's, it's okay to be kind of excited with that, but also sober in the analysis of even with that, Moody's is saying, great, keep, keep going. Right? Because you're still behind where you should be. So the results of that is a quarter of that would be a 1.175 million transfer into a stabilization fund, which would put stabilization at just over 4.7 million, which is significant progress and is more than triple the balance of that account from five years ago. So.
Any questions? Okay. Before we do take the vote on that, I do want to just kind of jump back to something that you said about the building permits and how, how much more there were this year of inspections. And we did that with inspectional services, not increasing their department at all. So.
Right. They deserve a ton of credit.
Biggest amount of workload on top of that. And people are probably like, all she does is say good things about the department heads. But, you know, I really think it's important to, to call these things out because they are, they're doing a great job and they're doing a lot with a little. And, you know, when you have every, every department that we had last year on the, on the town and the school side, overdid themselves with trying to cope and, and deal with the impacts of COVID. And one of these, you know, I think that might be overlooked is inspectional services. So please thank that department for their extra work on that. So with that, if somebody would like to make a motion to include and recommend Article One, the transfer to stabilization fund?
Move to include Article One and recommend Article One.
Second Lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Devens, yes.
AC, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. Next is Article Five, Payment of Bills from Previous Fiscal Year.
We're leaving that in a warrant, so I would just ask for a vote to include it.
I move to include Article Five.
Thank you.
Second Lamb.
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Devens, yes.
AC, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. Next for Article Six, to amend the fiscal year 2022 budget.
So last year, amending the fiscal '21 budget because of COVID was actually really substantial. This year, it's much closer to normal, which is nice. It's, it's relatively not spectacular, which is good. It's all carried in the explanation. It will adjust the fiscal '22 operating budget, including our revenues and expenses. The assessing department requires roughly 18,000 for some staffing and training requirements. The fire department will have 64,000 and change, which is to ratify the collective bargaining agreement for the current fiscal year. Funding for that was held, 65,000 was programmed into the collective bargaining reserve. So that's just moving money from one pocket to another. Regional and county school assessments are increasing by 65,000, mainly due to a change. As the board may recall, back in spring, when we were setting the fiscal '21 budget, southeastern regional schools' budget anticipated them being able to apply ESER to funds, which were part of federal relief dollars relating to COVID, to the local assessments. And it turned out they can't. So we have to pay the difference. So that's most of the driver there. However, even when you add those things up, our debt and interest, so again, back to the bond issuance budget is, does not need the amount of money that we programmed for a few reasons. One, interest is obviously quite low in this market, which is great and something we can avail ourselves of with our bond rating. Two is that the actual costs so far, if you could hear me knocking on wood, have been quite a bit below what we expected and forecasted when we went for the debt exclusion. And so what that translates to is that we don't actually need the, the amount of money in this year's exempt debt budget, as we would have thought. So this would reduce that to reflect the bonds you just issued 10 minutes ago. And that will actually be a decrease of almost three quarters of a million dollars. And that's significant because that's the exempt debt that directly translates into the levy being lower and the tax rate that you will set in November or December being lower. So it's actually, in the net, we're amending the 2022 budget and reducing it by about 562,000.
Great. Any comments or questions? Okay. Can I get a motion to include and recommend Article Six, Amending the Fiscal Year 2022 Budget?
Move to include and recommend Article Six.
Second Lamb.
Barger and Lamb?
Barger, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Devens, yes.
AC, yes.
And full Janetti, yes. The next one is Article Seven, the Supplement Fiscal 2022 Capital Budget.
Sure. This is another article that we typically take up every fall. We fund some of the highest priority needs in the spring. And then we hold off until the fall to see what free cash looks like, mainly to fund a supplement of other items that we can afford. So Wendy and I looked through the remaining items that were deferred at spring or have been sitting on the deferred list for quite some time. We went back to Capital Planning Committee for a reprioritization last week and Finance Committee. And I have a memo attached in your packet. It's also online that lays out what the supplement is. Briefly, just flipping through the article, it's all itemized there. You have a 1.3 million-ish supplement because of our current situation, recommended to be funded all with cash and no borrowing, which is good for the town's long-term debt obligations and is the ideal way to spend capital. Already touched on the generators of free cash, although I noted them in the memo because I felt it important to have it in writing somewhere. And it includes annual police vehicles, some matching funds for the fire department for a FEMA grant they will receive for a fill station for a self-contained breathing apparatus to replace a 23-year-old system, funding schools' technology, that's computers and projectors, Chromebooks for students, things of that nature, funding the town IT department's cyclical annual computer and hardware and software replacement and as, as well as a server upgrade. Planning, so something that I'm excited about and hopefully you all are and, and Mark is in his capacity as Chair of EDC. We were once the leader in online permitting municipally. And now we are behind the eight ball. So we were one of the first ones out of the gate and then time passes, as it does, and now our software is old. And I think that's probably apparent to anyone who uses it. It, it works, but it lacks a lot of administrative backend function for staff that could otherwise help us more efficiently review and issue permits, which is particularly important. You know, I, I was thinking of the building department in particular with this, where we have, we actually have fewer staff now than in the past decade and we are doing more work forever. And so we need to really make sure that the tools we're using are, are not just adequate, but, but good and, and on the cutting edge. So we have modules, software modules that were built incrementally over time because that was the funding that was available. And because of that, they're all in silos. So we have somewhere between six and 12 of these modules for different departments and boards that look kind of alike, but not exactly alike and are siloed. You need unique user credentials for every single one of them. There's not a unified login system and then you can pick, like I want to apply for this department of that. You have to make unique credentials, not just for staff, which is difficult and cumbersome, also for users, which is not ideal. Because when somebody opens a business, they don't think about things in the bureaucratic silos of statutory departments. They think, okay, well, I want people to be able to have beer and a burger. What do I do? And then if the answer is, we have online permitting and that's great, but you need to create a username with the zoning board of appeals for your outdoor dining, the planning board for your site plan, the building But you need to create a username with the zoning board of appeals for your outdoor dining, the planning board for your site plan, the building department for your building, select boards office for your liquor, the health department, you get the drill. So it's good, but it can certainly be better and faster and have better information sharing across departments and integration with existing systems like G I S. So this funding would completely rebuild our online permitting and integrate all the data that's already in there. You look at the building department, they're one of the more impressive modules and one of the earlier ones you can right now, outside of workflow efficiency and economic development benefit. It's also a really great transparency tool. People can go on and pull building permits readily, going back many, many, many years, which is, which is great. It's the same philosophy behind, we have minutes going back to the seventies for some boards. We have budgets and salaries online searchable because we know people are curious and it's easier to put it on the website and deal with records requests. And so this just helps continue to make our business transparent, make it easier for people to use and reduce the likelihood of really, 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 really busy staff missing something or, or something like that. So this would upgrade that. I think it's a great investment. It was deferred in the past due to a lack of funding. And I think now is the right time to do this because there's no signs that things are going to cool off and we want to make sure our inspectors and folks have good tools to do their job effectively. So I'm super excited about that. I don't know. There was questions about the e-permit stuff.
I don't have any questions, but I was really excited, you know, when we first got on board with online permitting and there's a lot of communities that still don't do it. So to be again, on the cutting edge of getting to that next level and connecting these all is really exciting. We've gotten letters and emails from people in the past, really thanking us for the online permitting. So I just think it's going to be incredible now and certainly an economic development asset for businesses that want to come to Eastern.
For sure. And I didn't mean to sound doom and gloom. It is still leagues ahead of many of our colleagues. We, we just we can and should push the envelope there. So I think we, we ought to. And then finally, now finally, sorry, Public Works, as the board as well, where Dave does a really good job explaining the asset replacement schedule that is optimal for Public Works, frequently highlighting that in the water division, which is part of DPW, but has an enterprise fund. They're able to replace vehicles at a much younger age, saving costs on mechanics and things like that. And that's optimally what we would do for Public Works in order for them to just keep their fleet near replacement age. They need to be investing a minimum of seven hundred plus thousand. Dave's actually still in the audience and I didn't know that and he might correct me, but I think it's a met area and we're finally going to do that with a supplement this year and add a couple more vehicles that were deferred. Two hundred and thirteen thousand for a F five fifty. And another, sorry, that's the total, one twenty-eight and eighty-five for replacing an F five fifty and a Bobcat loader. So getting a couple more of those on the board. And then finally, the largest piece here is feasibility phase funding for municipal facilities planning. The board is, is, I think, well aware, the needs of our public buildings are, are great. Back in two thousand and nineteen, working with municipal building committee, Dave Field updated the Doring Whittier twenty fourteen facilities assessment report to put more current day numbers on repair and replacement of the town and school buildings and make recommendations to the committee. And at that point, before COVID, the recommendation was at a minimum to replace police, fire and public works. These facilities are, with limited exception, too old, too small and have various code and compliance and accessibility challenges, not just from the public, but for our personnel who work in them and the equipment that we store. And in many cases do not have space to store in them, leading to faster degradation of our assets. We have ADA accessibility issues, water, the water department building is one hundred years old and is not fully accessible. We have environmental regulations challenges where we do not have the ability to appropriately manage stormwater on some of these sites. These buildings were built mostly in the sixties and modified in the seventies. Half a century ago, our departments were much, much, much smaller and staff far fewer people. And as time has gone on, we have just been putting more and more people and things into them as the buildings degrade. And it's time to start moving this forward in a serious manner. Particularly because not unlike the early elementary school project that we went through, with multiple buildings and multiple sites, you can really fall down a rabbit hole of different site options and building combinations. And so it's important to start bringing in design professionals early to start looking at that because it's not as simple as just replacing a single building with the exact same type of building on a piece of property. The sites that these buildings are currently on, Center Street and Lothrup Street are too small. And so we need to be looking at things like the municipal set aside McGill property, potentially the center school site, which will no longer be a school and other real estate that the town has interest or control in, to make sure that we measure twice or three times and cut once. So this funding, five hundred thousand, will get us moving in that direction and provide us with enough funds to bring, identify and bring on board an owner's project manager and start doing preliminary schematic design, site assessment, budget forecasts, and significantly because this involves fire, we're also going to need to be looking at things like response times because where ambulances and fire stations are dispatched from has an impact on where they get, how fast they get. So there's a ton of variables here. There's going to be a lot of work to do. Frame of reference, the town appropriated funding for feasibility phase for the current construction project for the schools in twenty seventeen, took two years to get to a debt exclusion and two more years to where we are today, construction's moving along and it should be done in a year plus. So you're looking at five plus years from feasibility before you're at a point of having a building and that's when things are moving quickly. So this would be funding to get that moving. The board executed an M O U in the spring with a LIP applicant before the zoning board that if, if that gets approved at the zoning board level, would bring another quarter million of funding into the pot for this some point in the spring perhaps, and that would keep it moving. If we do need additional funds, we could, for feasibility, we can come to town meeting in the spring. But this gets us going. And again, given where we are with free cash and given the severity of the needs in these facilities, I think it is time. So happy to, that's really the big thing here on the capital budget. I'm happy to answer any questions about it.
Go ahead, Mark.
Yes, hi Connor. I do have a quick question. So the feasibility study, which I fully support and I support the direction it's taking to town of Eastern in five hundred thousand dollars. I know that other studies, sometimes we, we apply for a grant and we get funds and we can apply towards that study. Do you see a possibility for that in the future? Any openings? I mean, I, I, talk to me about that.
So it's a great question and Mark, I think you're, you're giving me a layup here to explain for, for public's benefit. We pretty aggressively pursue grants and are pretty successful in winning them despite not having grant writing staff. Unfortunately, for all of us in the community, there doesn't exist a dedicated Massachusetts School Building Authority type entity, a grant entity for public built, for, for municipal buildings. So it's free, it's, it's common and it's ideal that if you're going to do one of these, you know, multiple million dollar public construction jobs for a school, you have to follow a prescriptive process with the MSBA. And if you get invited into that to participate, but you're, you're, you and your community can benefit tens of millions of dollars of state funding. This is an area that we have advocated to our legislative delegation for many, many years to. I believe Senators Timolty and Brady each, Dottie would know better, but may have, have filed bills on this to create an, an MSBA type granting authority for public buildings, but they, they haven't gone off the ground.
Is it one still, it hasn't been voted on yet? To correct.
It takes a long time for these to go through. Auditor Bump has just done a study talking about primarily in the western part of the state, how they really need so much help with infrastructure, but what they're proposing is creating an MSBA-like structure for municipal buildings. And you know, our town isn't the only one. There's numerous towns. I mean, these, all of these buildings were basically built around the same time as land use was expanding out into the suburbs and and now they're all falling into that state of disrepair where they do need to be usually replaced because they can't be upgraded anymore as we saw in the Doring Whittier report. So things are in the legislature for a long time. We're, we're pushing and you know, I asked, I sent an email to Mike Brady's office, Senator Brady's office a couple of weeks ago, asking for the status and they did give us the update that Auditor Bump had made that report, but we, we need to just keep pushing and asking and pushing and asking. So.
That's kind of why I brought it up because I know that you, you know, you had followed up with that and they're working on it. So I hope that that, you know, goes through sooner than later. I, I hope that even if it does go through, there's some sort of language in there that allows, you know, the year retroactive or something so that we don't miss out. That might be pie in the sky type thinking, but I'm trying to find some positive.
And, and we will stay engaged on that. And, and on that report from the auditor, the auditor submitted that as part of her testimony to the, a joint special committee on state allocation of, of ARPA federal dollars. And I, on behalf of Easton, submitted testimony basically echoing that, pointing to the auditor's report quantifying what any of us who work in this industry know, which is that as appreciative as we are for the existing grant pathways, they are woefully inadequate. Chapter ninety for roads has been mostly level funded for decades and there is not enough money coming from the state to adequately repair roads. Grant programs like Mass Works are great, but they are a challenge to, and take substantial resources to apply for and win. And even when you do, it's usually a partial award. And there were some statistics in the auditor's reports that are particularly incredible for folks to keep in mind. So Mass Works projects, just in fiscal twenty, the Commonwealth received one hundred and seventy-three million dollars in requests and they funded fifty-eight million. And we were actually one point five million in that, in that year, but so fifty-eight out of one hundred and seventy-three. So that's, that means that two thirds of every dollar being sought for projects that need doing is not being funded. So unfortunately, you know, we are kind of left to proceed with eyes open that the overwhelming majority of the cost of a project like this would be on us. And because the alternatives are, are worse of, of doing nothing. We will work with our delegation. We will appeal for earmark funds for portions of the project that we can. We'll advocate for allocation of federal dollars. We of course don't know if and when it's going to be infrastructure week, but I've, I've heard infrastructure week's coming. And there could be more federal money on top of a rescue plan that depending on the way that it's written, could potentially be eligible for buildings. We don't know yet. So there, there's a lot of money, federal money coming into the economy right now. So that could be helpful and we'll do everything we can to find ways to advocate that that be shaped in a way that you know, local governments can, can make good use of it so that these buildings that the public uses, that our employees use are in line with the quality of people in them. But, but yeah, yes, Mark, we are, we would be proceeding, you know, without that program existing into Dottie's really good point. These things take years to get off the ground. So if we, we, the risk of waiting, in my opinion, is, is, is a higher risk.
Absolutely. I, I, I'm a hundred percent in agreeing, agreement with you, Connor. And hopefully along the way, tools will be made available to us to help us in the form of a grant or some program within the state. So no, I, I completely agree with you. Now, we have to start this now.
And when the big infrastructure grants come out, that, what gets funded, like for Mass Works, for instance, you don't get funded a Mass Works grant unless you're shovel ready. So that means you already had to do all the work, get all the permits.
Yeah, you had to do the study to get the grant to fund the project. It's all part of the whole game.
Ability study puts us right in, in the waiting game so that if money is available, we're already a few steps ahead of the game. You know, I was looking through notes. I was trying to clean my desk today. I had a lot of piles of paper that I had to go through and organize. And one of the things I just coincidentally found was I'm on the, the MMA's policy committee for local government and regional government. And they, we, we were talking several months back, the legislature is looking at voting on sports betting. And so lottery funds are what are used for the MSBA. And the sports betting, if that was to go through, the proposal at the time was that thirty-five percent would go into the general fund, twenty percent would go back to the cities and fun, cities and towns on a per capita basis. Fifteen percent would go to gambling addiction, ten percent to gateway cities, five percent to youth development, five percent to a locally, five percent to distressed restaurants fund, five percent to municipal police training. So there, there's conversations going on in lots of places about this. So if any one of those actually takes off, but if you, if you hear things about the local sports betting, pay attention to that and listen to the details of it because that could be something that really helps local communities as well.
The ARPA funds coming out of the Bristol, out of Bristol County, do we have an update? So where we are with that that might impact you know, our ability to move forward?
Minimally. So funding for, for the local government will be available between the direct funding we're receiving as well as funds that we could apply for, for through Bristol County. However, the challenge we would have, and this was included in my testimony to, to the state, is that although the level of federal relief we're receiving is meaningful, the scale of these projects is so huge that use for the water plants, for example, but the direct aid we will receive is less than one third of what the P F O S plants will cost. And those are dollars that can be used to do things like reduce the cost of kindergarten, higher mental health interventionists and do other really high-impact programming that we have very few revenue sources to select from. And so ideally, the state who also is receiving ARPA funds, some large, large number of that could create programs for eligible expenses that cities and towns could avail themselves up to supplement what we are receiving directly. The challenge, at least with ARPA for now, is while those funds are somewhat broad, there, the funding for buildings is, is really more specific towards retrofits and renovations to assist with preventing the spread of COVID and other illnesses. It would probably be, you know, if we, if, if there is kind of individualized HVAC projects or things like that, that could make some sense. But as far as part of a town's broader building needs that existed before COVID, it, I, I don't know if that's a, a, a good match.
Amy, Jen?
Yeah, I just want to say if anyone in the public has not walked through some of these buildings, Connor did a good job outlining, you know, outlining some of the issues, but just plumbing alone, we've, we've run out of the ability to accommodate multi-gender, you know, facilities. So that, you know, Lothrup Street is a great example of Station One and the police department where we've done mold mitigation and we've got, we're just chasing leaks in these roofs and, and plumbing is such that we can't accommodate any, any more personnel because we don't physically have anywhere to put the, the wastewater now. We're, we're, we're capped out and we keep running into plumbing issues and and it's that way across, you know, all these buildings in different areas of, of maintenance and and the schools is a great example. If we want to look at mitigating future costs, this, this is a great way to do it. It's cost avoidance and we need to take this seriously, which we're doing and that's great. And but I just want the public to know, hey, great way for you to exercise your ability and, and your voice is to go walk through these facilities and, and have any one of the department heads show you around.
That's an excellent point, Jamie. Thank you. And you know that from your time on the finance committee, you've done a lot of work on looking, working with the department heads on those buildings. So thank you. Jen?
And nothing to add, just to echo Jamie's sentiment. It's, it's totally accurate. When you go to the buildings, you see that they're being strained to the limits and the analysis and thinking that has gone into getting us to this point has been happening for a very long time. So there's been a lot of process and a lot of thought and a lot of input to this. So I think you know, this is a positive step in the right direction.
Great. All right. Well, with all of that said, if somebody would like to make a motion to include and recommend Article Seven.
I move to include and I move to include and recommend Article seven.
Second lamb.
Roger and Lamb.
Barja, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
ACS.
And full genetti, yes. And the last article for review tonight is Article nine, Appointment of Trustees to the Ames Trust Fund for the school uh for the Town of Easton Highway pertinent. Permanent Fund and Supportive School Fund. Um I am. A little bit ill-prepared if you just bear with me for a second. Um I had spoken with um David Ames. Because I wanted to ask him a little bit more about what this trust fund is. Um and he. Sent me some comments that I'm just trying to pull up here on my computer. So um he he writes, since the eighteen seventies gifts of Oaks and Oliver Ames Junior to the Eastern schools. Members of the Ames family have set up and contributed to a number of trusts that benefit Eastern institutions. Some are town owned like the Schools of Eastern and others like Frothingham Park are private. In nineteen seventy-four, David Ames Senior created the Eastern Community Corporation. To consolidate a number of smaller trusts with larger ones so they could all benefit from the professional investment advice at reasonable costs. The Community Corporation and most of the other family trusts are advised by Lowell Blake. Over the years, the value of the investments in these trusts has grown substantially. At the September thirty, as of September thirtieth of this year, there was worth. Of excess of fifty-six million dollars and were projected to flow almost a million dollars back to Eastern over the next twelve months. So I thought it was important to to get those numbers and to get those comments from uh David Ames because. I I knew that there was a trust, uh you know, I knew that it that it gave money to the town, but I never really understood the details of it and. You know, to have the vision um back in the eighteen hundreds when some of these trusts were actually put together by the family to still be in existence. And you know, really incredible stewards of the town to to be thinking about these trust funds and how they'd help the community, you know, centuries to come. Is really important and those have to be managed properly so that they do uh have the best chance at growing and. I didn't realize that there were several smaller trusts to be consolidated together. So um. I guess, you know, if when we were at the September eleventh ceremony, um Chief Alexander said, if we're not talking about. Uh you know, things in history like nine eleven. Uh the kids in our schools weren't even alive. They weren't even born yet when that happened. If we stop talking about and and uh recalling the stories of where these trust funds came or certain things throughout history. You know, we're already, we're already not knowledgeable, some of us like me, of how these came about and what they're for. So in another twenty years. I just don't want this to be like a token on the wall like the, you know, oh, that Ames Family Trust that nobody knows what it came from. So I. I wanted to show our appreciation and gratitude to the Ames family um and their thoughtfulness in making sure that the trustees are, you know. Picked appropriately to be able to maximize the funding um through investments. And to really, you know, take a second to just acknowledge that. Decisions that were made back in the eighteen hundreds are still uh generating goodwill and financial success to our town right now and. And to thank the Ames family for making sure that that continued all these years. So that's uh that's my two cents on that. So Article nine is to make an appointment of trustees to the Ames um family fund. And I'm just going to find it on my screen here. Um. So this James Thomas um appointed a trustee by vote of town meeting on April twenty ninth nineteen ninety-one. Has resigned as trustee and this article will fill that vacancy and add a third trustee to care for. And manage the funds along with continuing trustee David Ames Junior. So uh this this warrant article appoints Henry Ames and Kevin Kidd as trustees. So does anyone have any questions or comments?
I do. I just want to thank you for both reaching out and sharing that history and for all of us now, especially myself, that's. Educated more because you're absolutely right. It's like a black hole that why haven't we asked these questions or. Uh educated ourselves as to the the history of it. So thank you.
Yeah, you know, um I I I remember learning on the Finance Committee, somebody said to me um when I started on the Finance Committee. He said, you know, the town of Easton still to this day, every year benefits uh in in a seven-figure dollar amount from the Ames family. And uh I was blown away. I couldn't believe that. Uh you know, all all the buildings we have in Eastern from the families, we're obviously incredibly thankful for and we've pretty much built our town around it. Um. But to know that that amount of money still comes to the town of Easton every year. I don't know of any other community that has that that benefit. So it's it's incredible. Uh and thank you for talking about that because I don't think a lot of people know that. Um. Yeah.
Terrific. Anybody else? All right. Well, with that, if somebody would like to make a motion to include and recommend Article nine.
I move to include and recommend Article nine.
Second lamb.
So Bajer and Lamb?
Barja, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
ACS.
And full genetti, yes. The next item on the agenda is the acceptance of minutes from October fourth, twenty twenty-one.
Sorry, I have to uh remind and ask you to, now that you have voted to include and or recommend all the articles, just to take a kind of perfunctory vote to. Finalize and sign the warrant, please.
Yes, thank you. I wrote it down and was looking right at it and stepped right over it.
It's okay.
Um would somebody like to make a motion to uh close and sign the warrant? Is that how to say it, Connor?
Uh yes, that that'll do.
So moved, Bajer.
Second lamb.
Roger and Lamb?
Barja, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
ACS.
And full genetti, yes. All right. And uh then the next item is the acceptance of minutes from October fourth, twenty twenty-one. If somebody would like to make a motion to accept those.
Don't move, Bajer.
Second lamb.
Roger and Lamb?
Barja, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
They see, yes.
And full genetti, yes. Um town administrator notes?
Uh just thank you um uh to the staff, you know, tonight uh and the department that's came to the meeting. We touched on a lot of really. Um business-like items tonight with bonding and borrowing and project management services and. Uh things of that nature, but they're all really important and uh precinct maps, GIS, elections administration, and and they're all doing a really great job. And uh we're very appreciative of it. So thank you to the staff.
Great. Um Craig, do you have any selectmen's notes?
No.
Mark?
Not tonight.
Jamie?
And tonight.
Jen?
I do not. Thank you.
Well, I have a couple that I pulled out of um the town crier. So just a reminder, this Saturday, October twenty-third is National Drug Takeback Day at the Eastern Police Station. From ten to two. Um you can bring any unwanted medications over the counter. Pet medications will also be accepted. Sharks, which are needles and syringes, will be accepted if you bring them in a puncture-proof container. This service is free and anonymous, no questions asked. If you can't make it this Saturday for a medication drop-off, you should know that in the Eastern Police Station, there is a kiosk. That you can go to anytime and drop your uh prescription medication in there. They do not take sharks at the police station, though. Um also, Wednesday night at six thirty, the Housing Production Plan Virtual Public Meeting is being held. Uh the Affordable Housing Trust. And Old Colony Planning Council are hosting a virtual public input meeting to update the Eastern's housing production plan. At six thirty in the town crier, there's a link to the Zoom um invite on that and it will be posted in the meetings. Section of the calendar on the front of the um website. And then we've talked a lot about uh special town meeting, but I just want to really underscore it's November eighth. It's coming up in a couple of weeks. It's at seven PM at Oliver Ames High School this year. Uh we are back to somewhat normal. Um the meeting is going to focus on the routine, but important business conducted at the special fall town meeting. So we want to really, you know, make sure that people come out so that we're not waiting around at eight o'clock trying to achieve a quorum. There is nothing really controversial or um, you know, uh the type of thing that draw people out. But if everybody comes out, we can get through the articles pretty quickly and um not have to spend a lot of time at the beginning. Texting our friends and family and neighbors and asking them to come down so we can meet quorum. So. Uh we hope to see everybody on November eighth. Uh town meeting is actually an exciting night for for us and um. Hope people will remember to be there. So with that said, um could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Bajer.
Second lamb.
Roger and Lamb?
Barja, yes.
Lamb, yes.
Evans, yes.
ACS.
And full genetti, yes. Thanks, everybody. Have a great week.
Hi, everybody. Stay safe.
Good night.
Good night.